The following is brought to you by KMUN, your coast community radio. This is part two of a two-part recording of a candidate's forum in Astoria. In this recording, you will hear from candidates in the races for seats on the Astoria City Council and the Warrenton City Commission. Candidates running in uncontested races did not participate in this forum. Only the incumbents in the Warrenton City Commission races attended the forum. Their challengers did not. One woman had a prior engagement, the other two declined to participate.
For an introduction to explain the reasons why they should be elected to their respective positions, candidates will be asked to answer written questions submitted by the audience, and you will have one minute and 30 seconds to answer those questions. The timekeeper will notify you at 30 seconds remaining, as well as when your time has been exhausted. And at the end of our forum, each candidate will have two minutes for a concluding remark. This evening, to help facilitate the forum, I'm also going to group questions divided between the Astoria City Council and the Warrenton City Council, so that they can follow who's speaking more easily in the podcast for those who will be listening and not be able to see as we are this evening. So having said that, let's start off with our introductions, with the Astoria City Council, first with Vance Lum, followed by Lisa Morley, then Miriam Rose. Mr. Lum?
Thank you, and thank you to our hosts for having us today. My name is Vance Lum, and I'm a candidate for the Ward Four Astoria City Council position. I'm a working-class tradesperson and the owner of a small business located in Ward Four. And the battery, it's still going, okay. I am ready for this seat because I believe that this community should be a place where everyone can thrive. I moved to Astoria in 2018, and with the way that housing costs have been rising lately, I wouldn't be able to afford to move here today. I also have friends that are born and raised Astorians that have been priced out of their own hometown and have been forced to move away from the place where they grew up. This is not a sustainable direction for our city. I graduated from the Historic Preservation Program at Clotset County College, and this valuable local education gave me the skills needed to start my own business called Astoria Wood Windows, which serves the community by repairing and restoring our historic buildings. My preservation education also gives me a unique perspective. We are taught to honor and respect the past while also looking toward the future and adapting to modern needs. This is precisely the kind of viewpoint that is needed in a city like Astoria. Earlier this year, I helped form the Astoria Housing Alliance, a nonprofit that advocates for pro-housing policy in our city. As an organization, we have been working with city staff and other city councilors to make progress suggesting Astoria's housing crisis. When I've been going door-to-door introducing myself to my neighbors, people have been telling me more than anything else that the high cost of housing is the biggest issue facing our city. Businesses have reduced hours because they can't just find the staff they need. Doctors don't stay in our community because they can't find the homes that they want. And we can all see that far too many Astorians are unhoused, and are either asleep on the sidewalk or in their car. I'm a young, working Astorian, and I will bring a fresh perspective to the Ward Four Council seat. I'm excited that people get to know me and see how I can support our community. Thank you.
Ms. Morley?
Hi, Lisa Morley, also a resident of course of Ward Four, running for council for the second time. I ran in the last election, tied in a recount, and lost by one vote. So that shows you the importance of voting, so one vote. I'm running, I ran last time, and I'm running again this time to try and help increase what I believe is a lack of communication and visibility of the residents of Ward Four and Astoria and their insight into the city workings. Trying to find information, trying to get involved, it's kind of like a no-man's land. I'm pretty good on a computer. I worked at Intel for 15 years. I've designed websites. I've been a project manager. I've been an organizational cultural change agent for the last 15 years, practicing behavioral science and neuroscience with the largest corporations in the world, changing the culture through communication, collaboration, and negotiation. I'd like to bring those skills and help bring some of that visibility and that communication and collaboration and getting more resident involvement. What I've seen in my time in Astoria is that I feel like some of the decisions that are being made are maybe not putting Astorians first. That's why I'm running on Astoria first. I want the residents to be first in our decision-making process, and I want to be that change agent to help more of our residents get involved in helping shape the future of Astoria. Thank you.
Good you. Ms. Rose?
I'm Mimi Rose. I haven't been Miriam for quite some time. My mom used to call me Mary when she was bad at being... Astoria is a special place, and I'm grateful to call it home. In 2015, my husband and I purchased a long vacant house in Uppertown and worked to restore it. Since then, I've become deeply involved with our community, serving as a member of both the Uppertown Business Association and the Downtown Business Association, and supporting the arts at every opportunity. I'm also a building owner downtown. My platform is centered on safety and community growth. If elected, I'll tirelessly push for stronger cooperation with ODOT to reduce speeds on Lee Ferreksen Drive and revive discussions, perhaps on a truck bypass, so that we can save our downtown and ensure the completion of Riverwalk lighting to Pier 39. It's essential that our businesses in Uppertown receive the recognition and support they deserve. Our hotels, as an example, in Uppertown have paid hotel tax for years and still have no lights on the riverfront that they were promised. Workforce housing is another top priority, but it has to include adequate parking, as Astoria's public transportation system cannot meet the needs of a growing population. By offering incentives to developers, we can encourage the creation of much-needed housing. There's still land to be developed near York-Tongue Point, near Emerald Heights, both needing infrastructure. I believe since the state has a mandate for housing, I propose we go to the state for funding assistance. That said, there are many other issues to consider than just housing. Since 2020, I've attended city council meetings regularly, listening to the concerns of our community and staying informed on the issues that affect us all. I'm also honored to serve on the City of Astoria's Budget Committee. While on the Budget Committee, I voted for funding the arts and Uppertown business and voted against the 2% rate hike for water. I hope to bring my commitment and experience to the city council as the next representative for Ward Four.
Thank you. We'll now transition to the introductions for the candidates of the Warrenton City Council positions. Unlike those of the Astoria City Council position in Ward Four, these are three different respective positions. Position three will be Thomas Dyer. Position one, Gerald Poe. And position two, Jessica Solacio. We'll first hear from Thomas Dyer. Your introduction.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys putting this on. It's the first time I've went to one, and I've been a commissioner since 2012. I grew up in Warrenton. My family's been here in and of Astoria since late 1800s. Grew up in a family that did a lot of service. My mom was a school district 37 years. My dad was on the school board, so you know, didn't get away with it. My position is to assist my other commissioners and come as a crew to do the right thing for the city of Warrenton. We try to get more input from the citizens, and you'd think that'd be easy, but sometimes it's hard to make the meeting, so we've done some that will be easier for people to come to put their input. It's a learning experience, because when you get on the commission, you think, oh, you're gonna do it, fix it, and get it done. Well, politics gets in the way. You don't always get a chance to do things, you get it done in one four-year term. And I look forward to serving with my fellow commissioners and appreciate the support from the people of Warrenton and the work. We work with City of Astoria and Seaside and work together and make the North Coast a great place to live. Thank you.
Mr. Poe?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. My name's Gerald Poe. I've been serving City of Warrenton since about 2012 now. Started out on the Urban Renewal Board and then started in Budget Committee 2015 and was serving on both committees. In 2020, I was elected to the Commissioner One position and have been serving three and a half years now on that, or maybe just a little more. I've lived in Hammond for 30 years, and Warrenton is an interesting place because it's so fast-growing. It's probably the fastest-growing city north of San Francisco that's right on the ocean. And we have a lot of challenges with needing to rebuild a sewer plant and infrastructure with our roads, because as you know, trying to get into Warrenton in the summer can be pretty challenging these days, just with the tourist traffic alone. But I enjoy serving on the commission, and I know that in the future, another four years is gonna be challenging, but I want to do it. It's not always easy, like Tom says, to make the meetings, but I make most of the meetings. I don't think I've missed but one in three and a half years. Sometimes people tell you, you know, why would you want to do that? But it is very enjoyable, and I enjoy the, or serving on the commission. I'm looking forward to serving another four years, and I'm looking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, how many people from Warrenton are here tonight? All right, love to see it. Thanks for coming out. I'm Jess Solacio. Thanks to the AAW for hosting, and thanks for all the candidates for being here tonight. I'm your current position number two city commissioner, and I'm running to keep my seat as position number two. I believe in the power of community and the importance of building a future that works for all of us. As a mom of two young children, you might have met my daughter Cora tonight, I understand the unique challenges that young families face in our community, whether it's ensuring safe neighborhoods, supporting local infrastructure like roads, we talked about a little bit already, making your community more livable. It's not just thinking about the present, but it's thinking about the future and our kids and our grandkids. My husband and I dance here tonight. We're fully invested in Warrenton, not just with our time and energy, but we also purchased the Fenton grocery building in downtown. We are working to revitalize it, to provide affordable housing, enable more economic activity, and to revitalize that space, because we believe in Warrenton's potential, and we're committed to helping our town grow and thrive. It's one of the many ways that I share it for our community, along with running the Seed to Suffer program through the master gardeners at Trillium House, starting a seed library at our community library, and then most recently co-founding the Paranatal Task Force, which is focusing on making Clotset County the best place for women and children to thrive. We hosted a baby shower recently and had, I think, over 50 families. It was really incredible. That's all, so I take this work really seriously. Every decision that I make is informed by research, listening to the people of those affected, and it's essential to have someone in this position that understands the complexities and trade-offs of the choices that we face as a city. I am here to ask for your vote tonight, to keep me in seat number two. And again, thank you for all coming out, and I'm excited to answer your questions.
Thank you for those. And I'm a little fatigued. I think I'll lie again. There we go. So thank you for those introductions. At this time, we'll begin questions. We will, as I stated earlier, pair those by Warrenton and then Astoria, or vice versa. The first question, our community member asks this. I have noticed over the years a shift to accepting or promoting the LGBTQ agenda. There are some in the ward that do not support this. What, if any, conservative moves would you bring to the table? We'll start with the Warrenton City Council members and have Mr. Poe address this first. Could you repeat the question? Certainly. The individual writes, "I have noticed over the years a shift to accepting or promoting the LGBTQ agenda. There are those in the ward that do not support this. What, if any, conservative moves would you bring to the table?"
I don't think I would try to be conservative in any way. I think that equality is important, and I think treating everyone equally is what we should do without any injustice or impartiality. So I don't think I would want to be conservative in any way. I would want to be equal with everyone.
Mr. Solacio?
Yeah, and I completely agree with Commissioner Poe. I don't know what a LGBT agenda is, and the thing that's most important for me is making sure that our community serves every single person that's there, every single person feels welcome, and every single person has the opportunity that they deserve. So that's bottom line, full stop, what my values are.
And Mr. Dyer?
Yes, I have a gay son and I have a gay brother, and people are people. You need to love each other and accept the differences. That's what makes our world great. And, you know, think before you open your mouth, when you talk to someone, because you don't know where they're coming from. And it's better to love than to show hate. It's just not acceptable.
Shifting to Ward Four, we'll start first with Ms. Morley.
We'll echo what's been said up until now, and I'll just say the last job posting that I created, which was last year, when I put it out online, my favorite line that I came up with, I'm pretty proud of it, said, "All letters of the alphabet and all colors of the rainbow are welcome to apply." The promise I've been making as I've been going door-to-door in Ward Four is that I will have a monthly meeting with everybody in the ward that wants to attend, so we can talk about topics that are coming up on the future agendas for voting, so we can discuss those, and so I can vote to represent them. And I intend to represent everybody, and I'm looking forward to the Ward Four residents, that those meetings will get larger and larger and larger, so we'll all start meeting everybody that's living in the ward and seeing each other as neighbors again and as human beings and as friends and people we all want to love and respect and watch out for.
Ms. Rose?
I'm probably the last person on earth to have a conservative viewpoint for the LGBTQ community. I believe strongly in equality all the way around.
And Mr. Lum?
I'm glad that we all, first of all. So there's no such thing as an LGBT agenda. I think that's a totally just BS statement. It's literally people just living their lives, doing what makes them happy. We obviously should be supporting all Astorians, and so I'm glad that everyone here is of that mindset. I believe we have a wonderful LGBT community in Astoria. I've gone to many very fun events, going to Xanadu, and just, I mean, these are our neighbors, our friends, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with anyone living their life in the way they choose to.
So we've already discussed this this evening at the state representative level. Well, let's drill down a little more. This is a pressing issue for our community. Everyone wants affordable housing. Astoria is gentrifying, and demand for homes is up and supply is limited. What specifically do you intend to bring to that table that would have a real estate impact? And we'll start with the Astoria Ward Four candidates with first, Ms. Rose.
Thank you for the question. We have land that is available for building in Astoria, both at Tongue Point and at Emerald Heights. I have been informed that in Emerald Heights, there's about 200 acres. Not all of it is buildable, of course, because it's on hill. Some of it is slide, but it is buildable. And I think that if we work with, if the developers are able to work with the city and the city is able to work with the state, we can come up with a solution to be able to create the infrastructure necessary on open land. The downtown area is difficult because there isn't adequate parking. We don't have a bus system for people to get around. To put housing without parking doesn't really serve anybody at this point. I think that, I think that what we need to do is we need to look at alternatives, and that is the Emerald Heights-Tongue Point areas, along with empty buildings, such as the office building that is completely vacant in Astoria. Those are just some thoughts.
Ms. Morley?
So I've also put a lot of thought into this. Speaking of the traffic, I don't see, Astoria's been approximately 10,000 people for about 100 years, and it's, we have six square miles of land, four miles of water, and we can't build on the water anymore. I feel that we need to first improve our permitting process to get some of the derelict homes and the buildings that need to be revamped and maybe turned into boarding homes, make those incentives for buyers that want to buy those and turn them into boarding houses, turn the empty spaces downtown above the businesses that used to house families back into that type of housing. Before we would ever build anything on 200 acres or 50 homes or any of that, our infrastructure is not there. Our roads are in horrible condition. The traffic on Highway 30, living right off Highway 30, is a death trap. Every day, any of us try and turn on or off of Lee Ferreksen into home, we're taking our lives and the lives of our family into our hands, and I think we have to solve that first before we can ever talk about putting any more cars, families, on that deadly road. So my first thing I will fight for with working with ODOT, collaborating, is number one, put a red light, not a flashing yellow light that was taken down and never replaced at Emerald Heights. Put in a red light, lower the speed limit starting right there, so people start knowing they are in town now.
Mr. Lum?
Thank you. So I think the first step for city council is to kind of change the perception of the leadership of the city. So as of right now, if you ask people who build these projects, they say Astoria is a very hard place to build. And we do have very specific concerns as far as landside, geotech concerns we have to deal with. We do have limited land, and so I agree with all of that. But we also have a reputation as a place that doesn't approve things very easily, and some of that could be fixed by cleaning up our code. City's doing some of that already, but I think that we can really push that even more, create clear and objective standards in our code, so that as a community, we can decide, you know, what is it that we want to be able to build easily? And then if someone meets those requirements, then they can just come in and get their project approved relatively fast. Especially, we can move anything out of the process, or people can kill projects with appeals, endless appeals, then it's gonna make things go more smoothly. Developers don't want to enter an environment where they're gonna end up having to pay a lawyer. They're just not gonna start the project, and they're gonna go down into a different community and build 200 units in Lincoln City instead. And so I think also the city should find room in future budgets for fee waivers for highly needed projects. So if we want workforce housing or low-income housing, then we can provide fee waivers for certain projects, because they say that it's just hard to pencil those out. Thank you.
So shifting to the south side of the bay, Ms. Solacio?
Yeah, so you can't build, unfortunately, without infrastructure. That's what we're running into in Warrenton right now. We have the Fort Point Development that's facing some significant challenges moving forward, because we don't have the infrastructure to bring those 450 units online. So we need to get our bill passed, so that we can make sure that we're able to flush our toilets, have running water, and all those critical things that we don't have to like to think about. But in addition to that, a few other things, I was drawing down some notes, cutting the red tape, like Vance mentioned, other innovative strategies, fee waivers, and the zoning codes. We just received a grant to revise our building codes. Some of you might know zoning codes are pretty antiquated, and in the past, they've only allowed for single-family homes in certain zones. We're changing that. We're gonna allow for greater density, duplexes, ADUs, affordable, or attached dwelling units, detached dwelling units. So this will add to the density of these lots that have historically been prevented from having higher density. So bring more online available to the community will help to drive down those costs.
Mr. Poe?
One of the main emphasis of my campaign was to make it easier for developers, home builders, do-it-yourselfers, and has been, as I worked on the commission. I've been advocating for that all along, and the federal government, the state government has been complicating this like crazy, and the FEMA biopsy could really complicate it. But we just have to keep fighting against this overregulation and make it easier for people to develop, to build, to do fixer-uppers these days. It's so hard to get permits, and then the timing of getting stuff done, and I hear a lot of people talking about they get it approved, and then they come back and tell them they have to do it over or re-up on their application. So it has been complicated. It has been very difficult for people. I've heard a lot of complaints recently, and like I said, one of the main emphasis of my campaign is to try and make that a lot easier, and so I think that'll help.
Mr. Dyer?
I would pretty much say the same thing. We're fortunate we have some land in Warrenton, and we have some big areas that are getting developed, but if you can't do the infrastructure, or FEMA does what they're planning on doing, our hands are gonna be tied. But we have changed some of the regulation to make it better, but it's a lot of work, and there's gonna be a lot of work, because things get changed on us from the federal and state. But I look forward to doing that challenge, and even though we had some tiny homes that we're looking at. So there's a variety of things that are coming down the pike, and hopefully FEMA will be gracious with what they actually decide.
Thank you. With this next question, we're going to have the Warrenton City Council candidates begin, and Mr. Dyer, you just hold on to that mic. Here's the next question. The lifeboat and the harbor are vital services for those needing help with domestic violence and houselessness. What would you like to see to make these services more impactful? Mr. Dyer?
We need to have a dialogue with the people that aren't using those services, so they understand the need for them. I was a police officer for 32 years, and there is a serious need for that type of service. And it comes with people who, we all know people who've never had anything happen to them. They need to understand, because it is a community, affects the community, not just the people that are involved in it, but the people around them, the kids that go to school. We need to address it in a whole, not just a piece. We need to address it in a whole, not just a piece. That's, no, it's, it's a tough thing.
Mr. Pope.
I think one of the problems that they have is funding, is what I hear a lot, is that they are short on funding. If they had, you know, plenty of funds, they could have more people helping and paid employees. I think a lot of people there volunteer from what I understand, and the services aren't always available like late at night, things like that. I just think that if they had, if we could advocate for more funding so they could have more, more resources, because I know that most of the time, they're short on resources. So, I think that's a good solution.
Ms. Solacio.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up the funding issue. We need more money for these services. The majority of the work is being done by people that are not paid or poorly, poorly underpaid, and that leads to people having burnout, not being able to stay in this role, not being able to get additional training when it comes to things like providing these services. The types of things they witness on a daily basis, we can't even imagine. And we need to provide trauma-informed care. We need to provide these things because people, most of people in this room and most people in our community are two paycheck's away from becoming homeless. And that's the harsh reality that we're living in. And we need to fulfill the gaps along the way. So, it's not only about reducing adverse childhood events, it's not only about reducing the risk of homelessness, but how are we providing healthcare so people don't go bankrupt? So, it's thinking about these things in the context of everything else in people's lives and making sure that we're providing solutions that address it along the whole lifecycle.
And Astoria Ward Four, Mr. Love.
So, I agree that these services are vital, they need definitely more funding. So, in the city's role to advocate to the state or to the county to make sure that those funding sources continue is really important. When you think about lifeboat, one of the services they offer is overnight shelter for houseless individuals, and that's really important, but we don't really have anywhere for people to go to the next step. They don't have stable housing that they can move into instead of just being at an overnight shelter downtown all the time. So, we need more options for people in the low-income scale to get into housing, and that's just not available currently. So, we need to seek those projects out and make sure that they get through. In a different way, housing affects the clients at the harbor. You know, if you're a domestic violence victim, if you want to leave your living situation, there's not really anywhere in Astoria you can go. It's expensive, finding new apartments is very difficult, there's waiting lists for things, and so, you know, there is, it's harder to have choice on what you do with your life, and you may get stuck in situations that are not safe for you. And so, I think for housing issues are most important for those that are most vulnerable. And so, having more options there is going to make it easier to get out of those situations.
Ms. Morley.
So, I believe that as other people have spoken about, these are, there's a lot of agencies and individuals trying to step up and help. I believe in Astoria. Astoria, the city of Astoria needs to step up and take a leadership role in this. I think the can has continued to be kicked down the road, and that needs to stop. I think we need to do a point in time, community needs assessment, so we can get some metrics about exactly where we are, and then create a single point of contact as a starting point to oversee and help all of these individuals and individual programs that are all trying to work toward the same end, combine those resources so that people have a cohesive plan, put an individual plan. These are one-on-one plans that have to be put together. There's not ever going to be a cookie cutter, this is the fix. We're going to have to work with each one, each one of these individuals, one-on-one. We have to, we have to be willing to meet them, and we will have to be willing to have that program and help them step by step to that program and have metrics in place so that we can show that we can in fact solve this problem. But we need an overall leadership to take a hold of this instead of all these individual groups that are doing the best they can volunteering and burning themselves out. We as a city need to step up on city council and say, we're going to put a stake in the sand and right now, and we're going to start to take care of this as a community.
I have a little bit of a different stance on this. These are essential services without a doubt, and we have a lot of individuals in Astoria especially that go without necessary food. We have children who have a, a program that has to actually provide them shoes because they don't have enough money to buy shoes for their children. There is, this is a significant problem that goes beyond homelessness, and it is something that has to be addressed as a city and as a county and as a state. As for, we have, we were fortunate to see Columbia Inn open up that is, that I think is, houses some individuals that need the help. We have Clasip Behavioral Health that is building a new building on West Marine Drive, which is a great location for them. As for lifeboat services, I would like to see them relocate from downtown Astoria. I think that it has created a safety issue in the minds of a lot of people, individual citizens of Astoria that fear going downtown, and that's a worry.
Thank you. This question is the same question for all six candidates, but maybe with nuanced responses based upon our respective cities. What do you know about where your city gets its water and what are the major issues regarding your water supply? We'll start with Warrenton again with Ms. Solacio.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I can't say that I'm knowledgeable on this one, but I will do my diligence, go back and learn more about it so that when a decision does come up, I make an informed and nuanced decision, and I can discuss it with my commissioners in a way that is balanced and fair, and we reach a solution that works for everyone. So, that's the truth of it.
Mr. Pope.
Warrenton is very blessed to have a really good water supply, our own reservoir, our own watershed, and we have a very good water treatment plant that's being upgraded all the time with new covered building and new, I can't remember the exact ultraviolet, or we've got some new treatment, latest tech on our water. And like I said, we're very blessed to have a lot of water, we have good water. We, I think your heart uses our water, and we're working to keep our water plentiful and safe and good. And I don't know if I can say a lot more about it, I'm just very thankful that, that's one of our lesser problems, and we do actually stay very diligent as far as the infrastructure that protects and serves and treats that water. So, anyway, we do have good water.
Yeah, we are very blessed to have a very good supply of water up like the Lucent Park River and our storage, and we are keeping up with our water treatment plant, and we're preparing so we can have the housing come in, so we have a water supply, we have the treatment plant in the sewer lagoon to deal with that problem. But it is something you still got to stay on top of because the government, federal government can come in and cause a problem for how much water we can take out.
And Astoria with Ms. Rose.
We, we heard from our Andy Davis who told us about our, our wonderful watershed system, and we are very, very fortunate to have that. As for the water treatment plant, we are now working on it. The city of Astoria is working on a new upgraded treatment plant, which is costing millions of dollars. It has gone, it's gone over budget, and they're continuing to work on it. It is a perpetual system because it's, it's sold, and it needs a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of money going into it. But as for the watershed, we're very fortunate.
Ms. Morley.
Yes, agreed about our own wonderful watershed and water treatments right up by my place in Alderbrook. The dogs and I see it often. And it is being revised, and, and again, for me, the biggest challenge we have with our infrastructure is our 150-year-old sewage problem. And that's why I, you know, want to pop back to the housing. I, I'm, I am not a proponent of building more housing in Astoria. The, it's been 10,000. I, I think that's the right number for our location. I do believe there's a lot of houses left to rehab and places that can be utilized, but that sewage treatment facility right now is a, is a showstopper. Every house on my street that has sold in the last year, every single one of them, once it's sold, the first thing every homeowner knew how to do, and it's happening across the street, on two houses in front of me right now, is bring the vacuums in, tear up their entire yards, and fix their sewage treatment plant problem. And that's going on on my whole street in Alderbrook, every house that sells. So, it's a problem, and I say putting more houses in when we can't take care of Astorians that live here right now and are paying higher property taxes every year and think we're going to put more houses in and just contribute to the problem, I am not a proponent of that.
And Mr. Love.
So, yeah, I agree that with our other Ward Four representative or candidates that we are lucky with our, our water source, it's owned by the city, it's in a safe location from what I hear from Public Works, it's not a lot of potential problems up there. And so, I think our biggest issue with that is kind of our delivery system, as we've kind of talked a little bit about. I mean, we're a historic city with historic pipes, and our Public Works wish list budget is really long. And so, that's just kind of continually going to be something to chip away at as grants come along, different grant cycles, just finding projects that fit maybe a particular grant that we get told about. And, and our Public Works Department and other areas of the city have been pretty good about that from what I've seen at city council meetings. And, and so I think that just continuing that work will be good for us.
Is what do you think, if any, is the role of city council in supporting the arts in Astoria or Warrenton? And we'll start with Astoria with Ms. Morley and Mr. Love. Ms. Morley.
What role I think city council plays in that is to approve them. I did every extracurricular activity there was in school, and I tell my art teachers still to this day on Facebook that everything I took from her in arts and crafts, everything I learned in band, everything I learned in sports, but specifically in the arts and crafts arena, I still use every bit of that at some point every day, whether at work, whether at home. So, I believe we are not funding them enough, and in Astoria specifically. It kills me, and I've been talking to the residents, I don't think there is nearly enough for our kids in Astoria to do, from every age, from small up to teenager. We don't want them getting in trouble, we say, but we aren't offering them any options, even the things that we do have. Many of our families can't afford only skating. They'll tell me, the only thing I can do is afford to take them to free skating. They can't afford to take them to the Maritime Museum. There's not enough arts for them to be involved in, there's not enough activities. The cost to play basketball right now and, and wrestling through the, through the Parks Department, it's cost prohibitive, but the arts and crafts, they need that. That, that's what gives us hope as a society. That's what sets us apart from everybody else that doesn't have the arts. And so, the city council owns really, really reviving this and making it accessible to every resident in the city.
So, Astoria is once again lucky that we have so many talented, creative people in our city who want to put on events and offer things to the public. And the truth is, especially when it comes to things like performing arts, that doesn't survive without funding from various levels of the government, whether that's the city or the state, things like that. The ticket prices for those things just don't pay for those productions, and they never do, even at bigger events like even in Portland. So, continuing our grant program that we have, one bit of feedback I've heard from people who have applied for grants, arts grants from the city, is that they don't always know when that funding is going to arrive. And sometimes they, they need it for something or it'd be helpful to plan it, so maybe a little more communication on that end would be helpful. I mean, I would love there to be more funding for the arts in general, it's just a matter of does that fit into the budget? One thing that I do want to mention is, I've talked to a few people in the ward, and they've said that organizations like Consejo Espanol have never gotten a grant that they've applied for, and I think it's important for us to particularly look for people who haven't gotten grants in the past and try to spread that love around a little bit more. We have a very large Latinx population in Astoria, many of them in Ward Four, and we should be supporting their cultural programs that they put on with city funding.
Ms. Rose.
Well, as I said in, in my original statement, I am a strong supporter of the arts. Part of the reason that we moved here in 2015 was because of the strong art community. We, as part of the budget committee, we approved, I think all of the grants that came, came before us having to do with art. We, as the budget committee in the city of Astoria, we are strong proponents of the arts and make sure that it is something that's, that's funded equally. We do the best that we can with the, the budget that we have, but are very careful to make sure that the art is supported. On a, on a very personal level, my husband and I have the building downtown, and above us are not apartments, they are art studios, and we make sure that it is very low rent for the art artists so that they can create their art and have a special safe place where they can create.
Thank you. In Warrenton, let's start with Mr. Pope.
In my last three and a half years as commissioner, art doesn't come before the commission too often in Warrenton. I know here, art had glassblowing shops there on the corner, and in Astoria, there are a lot of galleries. But we do have a brand-new bronze statue at our main intersection, which when that came before the commission, everybody was all for it. So, when arts, art or craft, that type of thing comes before us, we're more than ready to approve it, even though it doesn't show up there that often. And there is a new statue, if you go through the main intersection there in the four-way, you can see the bronze statue there in the intersection. But I'm an advocate for the arts. I know when my, my 35-year-old daughter was young, I used to drive her clear over to a aqua to go to a Fagerlin studio to learn how to watercolor because they didn't offer any art at school. So, even though, and schools are more limited these, these days, they were talking about you have to pay, things like that. So, I'm an advocate to, to have it in the schools, and, you know, if we could have galleries in downtown Warrenton, I'd be all for that as commissioner. But it doesn't, like I said, come before us that often, but when it does, we do advocate for it.
Mr. Dyer.
I agree too. It hasn't come up in front of us that often. I can remember when my kids were growing up, we had to take them to Astoria for a lot of things. In fact, one of my sons had to go to Portland for oppo, and I am a definitely support art just like sports. Everybody has their little niche that worked for them, and I think you need to support all, and hopefully we'll get more things in front of us.
Solacio.
Thank you. The only thing that I would add in my candidacy, I talked
The only thing that I would add, in my canvassing, I talked to a family that has three teenage children, and their children don't want to be in Warrington because they like to do theater. They like to perform on stage, they like to play music, and that breaks my heart, that we have families with kids that say we'd rather be in other communities because our community doesn't provide what we want. And as a city, we're not in a place to provide grants to the arts at this time, but there's other mechanisms that we can use to bring in capital, to bring in funding, to bring in ideas. And that's what gets me really excited, having two children. I want Warrington to be a beautiful place where you hear music in the park, where you see beautiful murals. And there's organizations that do that and that have the money. I have been in conversation with people from Ford Family Foundation, from the Roundhouse Foundation, talking to communities when we go on road trips and we see places that have something cool, I will call them and I say, how did you get that done? Because that's what I want in my community, for our children and our families and the people that live there. And I will continue to advocate, I will continue to make those phone calls and have those conversations so that we can bring more beautiful things to Warrington.
So our final question this evening is regarding your understanding of your position and its scope. So the question is, what is your understanding of what a city council can and can't do? So we'll start with Ward Four, Astoria, with Mr. Lump.
So the city council, sorry, has, I believe, three employees, so that they directly, they're the boss of them, so the city attorney, the city manager, and the, the judge always gets kind of left out. I don't know if it's what the judge's title is, but I've heard from city councils that they've never really talked to him. But officially, they're their employee. So directly, the city council directs the city manager, who will then direct the rest of staff. So we kind of set the, kind of the, the goals and the priorities for a city, and then the city manager goes and executes all of that. And then the city council also hears from, obviously, the constituents and will take all that into consideration when they're doing votes and, and working on issues. You know, there's the Astoria Development Commission, where the city works as developer, uses urban renewal funds sometimes for different projects, and so that's another facet of city council. But they have the ability to also recommend changes to things like the planning commissions, we're talking about code changes and things like that. And so they don't make those changes necessarily, but recommend, planning commission approves it, and then it goes back to city council. I think an important part of what the city council does is when projects get appealed, they go up to city council, and so you end up, they're kind of the last buck locally as far as who gets to decide something, so it's important to have pro housing people in those seats.
Ms. Morley?
So in addition to what Mr. Lump has said, the, I agree that's the role of city council. I will, what I want to point out is what I see is in our city council, specifically in Ward Four, that the gap is that we're not getting enough interaction from the residents. It feels like things are voted on in city council that the rest of the wards, and our ward, my ward I can only speak to, don't know about. And so I think the gap is how are we reaching out to our residents in addition to the radio station and the news, the newspaper? What are we doing as a city council to let our town know what is going on, how to get them involved, what they want to do, what they want to see, things that are not on our agenda? Where are we reaching out to them? The, the stuff with the kids, Astorians, the Astorians I'm talking to are just desperate for things for their kids to do, they don't have to cost a lot, they just need to have access to it. It needs to be cheap, it needs to be free. And so what I, I think a gap we have in city council is getting our residents more and more and more involved and making it easy for them to get involved with us and making it easy for us to say, yes, we want to do that, let's work together and figure out how to make that happen so we can say yes. So that's what I want to bring to the city council, is to help close that gap.
And Ms. Rose?
Well, I agree with both of them, clearly. I also think that we are simply representatives of the city, of our ward. And it is our responsibility to be a representative for the citizens of our ward and what they feel is important. We can, it's our job to bring the concerns of our ward to the large of city council and the mayor and the city manager, to be able to make the city run as a cohesive unit. We are all just simply representatives of our voters, and that's our job.
Moving on to Warrington, Mr. Dyer?
As city commissioner, we basically are there to, our city manager, give her ideas and information that we want her to follow up on. And when there's a problem, we have meetings that we talk about it. And we basically lead with the ordinances, we pass ordinances on problems, comes in force, we discuss it, sometimes we'll have a town hall-type meeting to get input from the citizens. And I agree with Astoria, it's very important to get input. I think we're doing a podcast now, aren't we? We just start doing our meetings where, where people can actually watch. And we're trying to get more transparent and get more input, but it is a very difficult task because most of our meetings aren't really full of excitement. The ones that show up when we have those type of meetings, it's because someone's mad and a bunch of people come give theirs. And we have to be the peace makers to get things done. But we're basically at the will of the people to discuss the things that are brought up and our city manager brings up and deal with problems that come throughout managing the city.
Mr. Pope?
As a city commissioner, my main, main job is just to be a representative of the people of the city and to represent their, their needs and wants. And also to promote what staff brings forward and promote it in a healthy way, working with the other commissioners, to do it responsibly. Most of our agenda is what staff is bringing forth, whether it's the utilities or streets, there's, there's a lot of things, but most of it has to do with city business that comes before us, and then we advocate for that in a responsible manner between the four, the four commissioners and the mayor. And it's always voted on, so it's a, it's a democratic thing, it isn't one person's will, it's, it's working together and communicating and promoting the city business and promoting the agenda of the city, the people that live in the city, so basically.
Thank you. And Ms. Solacio?
Thanks. I would just add, in addition to being the voice of the citizens, it's our job to do the due diligence, to be well-versed on things like water, to understand the impacts that chicken ordinance will have on our community, to understand the impact that the FEMA buyout will have, and that's a big responsibility. And it's something that I actually do enjoy, I find it really fascinating. And I think it's important that the city commission, one of the big roles is also to understand the nuances and the complexities and the trade-offs that go into some of these really hard decisions. I don't think any of us take this job lightly at all, but we understand that the decisions that we make every second and fourth Tuesday have far-reaching impacts, and we want people to come to the table, we want people to be in those meetings to tell us how it affects them. And it's our responsibility to make ourselves available, whether that's the first, the second and fourth Monday warning with the mayor that we have in Warrington, whether it's being available on social media, all of our emails and phone numbers are available on the website, but it's being a conduit from the community into government and making sure that the will of the people is heard and then implemented.
Thank you. That brings us to the point in our forum for concluding remarks. We will remind the candidates that you have two minutes for your concluding remarks, and we will begin with the Astoria City Council Ward Four candidates, beginning with Ms. Rose.
Well, as a, as a building owner in downtown Astoria, a member of the downtown association, upper town association, Friends of Heritage Square Board, and the Astoria Budget Committee, I feel like I have a unique perspective of the dynamics necessary to help sustain a safe and thriving city of Astoria. That's why I'm running for city council. I think that city council is, has to listen to the people, and I think that I'm in a position to be able to do that and to work with the council to make things go a little smoother. Thank you.
Ms. Morley?
Okay, so thank you all for coming tonight, thank you for, everybody for hosting us tonight, I'm giving my two-minute elevator speech. The first thing I will fight for is to put in restricted bypass, the two-mile bypass from John Day over to 202, for trucks only, motorhomes and trucks larger, no services can be built on that two miles so that the business doesn't move out to the bypass. We still get all the traffic through town, and our cars, that's number one, number two, put a light in, work with ODOT, put a light in at Emerald Heights and another one at Lee Erickson. Slow the speed limit down to 30 miles an hour whenever they start coming into town, because it's a deadly racetrack right now, and we hear the sirens going all day and all night, it's not okay anymore. We have to put our foot down. I will have monkey meetings with the ward, anybody that wants to attend, find out what they want, vote the way they want, and I'm going to represent the ward, I'm not there to vote for myself. I think ODOT and Port of Astoria are key elements to our city council, and everything seems very separated right now. I think we need to close that gap and work together. Look at the city of Seaside right now, what they did with their roadwork this, this year from ODOT, that came from working with the facilities manager at city Seaside. I think we need to do a better job of working with both of those two entities. I don't, and that, none of the residents I've talked to wants to see Astoria turn into Lincoln City or Newport. We want Astoria to stay Astoria. Again, I'm going to keep saying, it's been 10,000 for 100 years, I think it should stay that, but I think we have the expertise within our city to fix the problems. I don't think we need to keep hiring outside consultants to come in and tell us how to run our city, we know how to do it. Let us come up with the solutions and implement them, that will also include helping to overcome the affordable housing and the lack of housing gap. We can fix this internally, and we will fix it internally. Thank you very much for your time, and again, I ask for your vote for Ward Four City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lump?
Well, the, the paper said that my campaign is a narrowly focused message. I would have to disagree with that because I believe the housing crisis affects our city in profound and varied ways. And putting housing first is really looking at the big picture and focusing on the foundational issue that's a driver of so many challenges in our city. A housing-first focus supports local businesses by making sure there are homes for their workforce. Housing-first will address increasing homelessness by creating opportunities for low-income people to get into safe and stable homes. If we want to make sure our city can grow responsibly, we need to be proactive on housing issues. We need to be open to new ideas and a new status quo at city council, because the way we've been working on this issue just isn't working well enough. I just want to put a note, we're not going to solve the housing crisis if we don't build more homes, that's just how it works. I believe Astoria is a community full of caring and compassionate people, and we want to see all of our neighbors doing well. And as a city councillor, I will bring this value to the table. We need to make sure people of all income levels are taken care of. And I will not let Astoria lose its historic character as a working-class city, because if we lose that, we won't even be Astoria anymore, we'll just be another coastal vacation spot. Making sure that everyone has access to a home that they can afford and that fits their needs will only strengthen our city. We have so much potential to do exciting things, and we can't let a lack of housing hold us back. And Astorians want focused and driven leadership to make progress on the challenges facing us. My issue-based campaign demonstrates that I have the qualities that people in Ward Four want from their representative. So I'm asking for you to vote for Vance Lump for Ward Four Astoria City Council in this election, and we can get to work. Thank you.
And transitioning to Warrington City Council, we'll begin with closing remarks from Ms. Jessica Solacio.
Thank you, and thanks again to all the candidates for being here, for AAW, AAW for hosting, and it was a pleasure to be able to have this dialogue tonight. As we look to the future, we need to see a leadership that shows up for our community that understands the nuances involved, that does the research and the complexities of everything that goes into these decisions. I'm invested in its success with my children, with our business, with the work that I've already done, the community that we've already started to build through the seed to supper program, the paranormal task force, and being involved in different ways. This is a community that I love and I believe is future. It's a beautiful place to be able to have a family, and I think we could do so much more. And I'm excited for the opportunity, I'm asking for your vote for city commission position number two. I'm ready to bring the same dedication and thought leadership to the city commission that I previously had on the planning commission and to continue to do this work. Together, we could face many challenges ahead with the FEMA buyout, infrastructure, housing costs, but I'm really excited to continue to do this work with my fellow commissioners and to continue to reflect the values and the needs of the people that live in Warrington and Hammond. And so now the ballots are being delivered, make sure you fill it out, everyone needs to vote and participate in our democracy. I think Warrington only has a 67% voter turnout rate, and we can do a lot better. Everyone deserves to have their voices heard. And thanks again, I'm Jess Solacio.
Mr. Pope, concluding your remarks.
Thank you. In the near future, Warrington faces some pretty big challenges. We're looking at a sewer plant rebuild, $30 million. Got a Hammond water line project that started out pretty cheap and is now looking at $6 million. COVID affected these things pretty badly. There's some street projects that are on hold. Basically, infrastructure stuff that, that we need to get in place so that the building can continue in this fast-growing city. It's, it's, like I said, one, it's the or one of the fastest-growing cities north of San Francisco, right on the ocean. And in order to keep it business-friendly, safe for families, and just a welcoming place to, to visit with Fort Stevens and all that, we've got a lot of work to do, and I think we'll get it done. But it's definitely going to be a challenge, and I think that having people involved like Tom and Jess is going to help. And so that's my close.
And Mr. Dyer?
Well, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and Warrington's had a lot of challenges in the years I've been on the commission, and we face a lot. Like Mr. Pope said, a lot of infrastructure stuff that we need to get done. We have made good strides in communication with the community, and I look forward to creating more opportunity for people to be part of the solution. You know, six people doesn't do it, we've got to have people to come in and be part of the solution. I think we can encourage that, and I think I've seen a lot of progress, and that reminds our, the, the program that cleans up Warrington, they've done a fantastic job, and that started with just a few people, and it ended up, it's, it's very proud to have that. Look forward to serving in another four years if you guys vote for me. And I want to thank my commissioners for the support they've given me and the city. And I really have a good feeling about the city of Warrington overcoming the obstacles in our way and seeing a lot of positive and working with our surrounding cities that are with us, because we're all intertwined and appreciate that Astoria and Seaside and all the ones that have come together. And I appreciate that Astoria and Seaside and all the ones that have come together. Thank you.
The concluding remarks, as Mr. Dyer brings us to the conclusion of tonight's forum, we would like once again to thank all of the candidates for being willing to be with us tonight and answer our questions as well as their willingness to serve. Thank you.
This concludes the Astoria Candidates Forum. This recording was brought to you by KMUN, your coast community radio.